I feel like I heard audio, but.
You did.
Are we live?
Yes.
All right. Going to call to order, this is the Town of Lake Clark Shores Town Council meeting for November 9th, 2021. And if we could have a roll call, please, Mary.
Mayor Paul Xiahou.
Present.
Vice Mayor Robert Xiahou.
Here.
President Pro Tem Gregory Freebold.
Yep.
Councilmember Bautine Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Albert Padam.
Here.
Thank you, Mary. If we could have a moment of silence for some members of our town and nearby who have passed away recently. Charles H. Damsel was ninety-two years old, passed away at the end of September on the twenty-fourth. He was the fa- is the, was the father of resident Chip Damsel. And Stu Lieberman, he's a former LCS Town Manager for many years. Since that from nineteen eighty-three to nineteen ninety-nine. Passed away on October twenty-ninth. And Wallace Anthony is the husband of River Beach City Clerk Claudine Anthony. And Marilyn Leclerc. Seventy-two years old, passed away October twenty-eighth. May their memories be eternal. Pastor, would you be so kind as to lead us in the invocation and then the budge allegiance?
Do we stand? Our Father in Heaven, I come to you tonight and thank you for this opportunity once again to come and pray here at the meeting. Lord, I always count it an honor and a privilege. Lord, I thank you tonight that when I pray that I have a God in heaven who hears prayers and answers prayer. I thank you that I have a God that I can come to and pray for these dear people and pray for my own family and others and. Lord, you're there to help us in our need, our times of trouble, any situation we find ourselves in, you are God Almighty. Lord, we come to you tonight and just ask that you would help us tonight, Lord, we turn to you for wisdom tonight. Lord, we turn to you to guide and direct these men and these ladies in this meeting tonight. But I thank you for each one of them, I come and it's almost like a church-like atmosphere to me. I thank you for that they make a great team. Lord, and they work together so well, each one has their role, but each one does it with all their ability and might. I thank you for, God bless them. Or bless their labor, bless their sacrifice, bless their families. And thank you, Lord, for their motive to make Lake Clark Shores just a better place to live. And God, we thank you for America tonight and thank you by your grace, we get to live in this great nation, would you bless it, please? Lord, be with these dear families tonight that lost their loved ones. Lord, that just helped them through this time, comfort them, thank you for their input in life. But Lord, now they're gone and others need some comforting and need some care. So God bless them, I pray meet their every need. Again, Lord, thank you for all that you're about to do, may everything we do tonight please you and honor you and give you glory, I pray it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Pastor, that was beautiful.
That was really nice.
Like to recognize before we get started, Chief Stansberry and Chief Adams from Palm Beach County Fire Rescue. Thank you both very much for joining us. Maybe when we get to the status reports, you'll have an opportunity to give us a brief update on how things are going. All right, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
All right. Making short order of this, no presentations, qualified judicial proceedings, public hearings, moving on to unfinished business. The lean at sixteen twenty-one Corandus Road. And I understand, Mr. Whitaker, welcome back, how are you today? All right. Would the council like to have any discussion before Mr. Whitaker speaks, or you want to? Anybody just want to have Mr. Whitaker come up here and we can ask some questions and get some clarifications on where we left off? All right, Mr. Whitaker, would you be so kind as to come on up?
Oh, you got some?
Oh, I had some questions, I'm sorry, I was gonna say.
To discuss here before?
Yeah, I thought maybe we could kind of lay it out, so some of the issues and then maybe ask him some.
Sure, whatever you want.
So, in our request at the last meeting, Mayor, we, I asked if we could have a little more verification of. Particularly the loose dirt issue, because that's the one that really is driving the train here. And so, Mr. Clark provided us with, it looks like a timeline of events. And I had a few questions, I'm so glad Dana is here because you were here then, or you dealt with this way back then, so you have memories of everything. It says here, according to our timeline, that. What I'm, what I was concerned about was, according to the timeline, you went and looked at the property back in two thousand and eleven. And the issue was sod and irrigation along two streets needed to be done. And. You, on five nineteen, two thousand and eleven, you inspected and took pictures showing that sod was planted along Corandus, but not Mango Circle. So what I was trying to figure out is that was about ten years ago, I know it's hard to remember, ten years, ten, ten and a half years ago. But I was wondering, Dana, if you could explain to us what you did, once you told, once you noticed that half, half. The property was in compliance and half, or half the issue was in compliance and half wasn't. Do you remember, like, what was the conversation with Mr. Whitaker? And could you explain to us when you said sod was planted, what did you, what do you remember seeing?
If I recall correctly. I'm going to assume on the nineteenth, I inspected it. It doesn't look like it would be a meeting date. Maybe they at that, one of those meetings, they gave them, oh, there you go, till five sixteen, okay, so I see why I inspected it. I do remember he, he put sod in the front of his house, but not the side. And the way his property is located, it's easier to say, the streets, because it goes on the big corner and that corner of Mango Circle, that. Partial part, a portion of it is his property also, so I just called it Mango Circle. So he just did a portion of it and didn't do all of it.
Do you remember how much he did, Ben? I know, I'm so sorry.
Are my, so we don't have my photos?
You did.
Yeah.
Did you say Dana or Dan?
Yeah. There's, there's multiple photos in this one. And there's photos in this one. Do you want the whole thing or just those? That's the only ones where the photos are?
Uh, just the photos.
Oh, hey, here, wait. Every folder has photos.
I'll give it back.
I don't need it. I do need that, though.
Can I, can I help with the description?
Well, yeah, why don't we have Ms. Fisher?
Well, let's just wait for Dana to tell us what she.
Oh, yeah, whole story.
Yeah, if we, just like, the reason I'm asking you, I'm asking council to understand is, I just want to find out. On May nineteen, twenty-eleven, like, what was, what had happened? What communications were with Mr. Whitaker? Because he did come to a meeting six days later, according to our notes. And, you know, why would you do something halfway, is what I'm trying to figure out, well, maybe there was a miscommunication or something. But he did, according to our timeline, he did put sod down, I don't know how much, but.
Begs the question, right, if he put sod down, didn't put it all the way around, goes to a meeting six days later. Present at that meeting, told he's in violation. What difference does it make how much sod was laid down versus not?
I think it makes a big difference, because I'd like to know. Look, the, the impression is for ten years, this person didn't do anything. And now he has a lean that's gigantic. I didn't know he had actually tried to do something, I want to know what he tried to do then. Just so I can satisfy my conscience before I, you know, have to vote on an issue of whether we reduce the lean. That, you know, a homeowner in our town tried to comply. That's all, that's, that's the only reason I'm focusing on just that part.
I appreciate that, but I get my question is. He was found in presence of a meeting to still be in violation. So what difference does it make how much he did before that date?
I think it makes a big difference, because I want to.
Why? What, what's the difference?
The difference is, I want to know what we've told he was in violation of, that's what.
At that meeting?
Yeah.
So it doesn't matter how much he put down, the question is, what was he found in violation of at the meeting?
No, I think it matters how much he puts down, I think we, I'd just like to know what he put down, just for my conscience. What was put down? What was not done? What was said at the meeting to him, and then why we have a ten-year, why is it nine years later that all of a sudden. Ms. Nash and Mr. Whitaker have a conversation and we send our Dana back out. In the year twenty-twenty to look at the property and it's now in compliance, I mean, to me, this is just the most bizarre situation, so.
Can I help try to explain?
Yeah, yes, you can do helps.
I'm still trying to find the photo, which I don't see, but I do know his property, but I just like to refer to my photo. So he was at the meeting and I do remember the violate, of course, you know, he's still in violation, but I do remember. His testimony was, he was trying to be like the properties in Palm Beach. And what some of them have, as he described, and what he had was. I, I want to say, I don't remember if he had the euricas or the ficus hedges, but he had it surrounding his entire property. And he only sotted the front portion, not the other portion. At the meeting, they found him in violation, and just at any meeting, when you're in violation, you look at my photos and the code board. And they may refer to me, would say, hey, what else do we need to do, but with loose dirt, you would see in the photos where the dirt is, and they probably said to sod it. And if I recall correctly, I don't think there was anything else much after that. It didn't show up at any more meetings or anything, so he left a meeting knowing that he was in violation.
Right.
And normally, in every meeting with every case, it is the, the property owner's responsibility to contact me. When their property is in compliance. But the way I operate, if I'm on routine patrol, I know what violations are still there, if I see that someone has corrected something and I. Think there's a case with him with address numbers, perfect example of it's his, I think. If I notice a person's property is in compliance, if I'm super consistent, I notice, I stop the fines as soon as I notice it, just because I feel that's the proper thing to do. So with that one, it never came into compliance, and I'm thinking in twenty-twenty, the town sent me back out there as a courtesy, and then it was taken care of.
Do you remember?
He kept loose dirt for quite some time.
Did, did the address issue come up after the loose dirt issue?
I'd have to look at notes for that one, I'm not positive.
Because I was just wondering, I was just wondering if, when we were out there, okay, so there, there was a business permit issue in two thousand and twelve. So that probably wouldn't require. You to physically be there. But then there was an address.
For the business one?
Right.
Yeah, they're, they're usually hearing notices and you, you're supposed to come to the hearing.
No, I meant you going out and doing an inspection, that wouldn't be like a, you would be.
Well, the, the address one clearly says notice of violation, June first, twenty seventeen, the loose dirt issue was in two thousand and eleven.
So then it's after.
Significantly after.
That's, that's what I wanted to know, so like, for example, when you were out there looking at the address numbers in twenty seventeen. Did you notice whether there was dirt, or did you remind Mr. Whitaker?
He's always had dirt.
Okay.
If you sit here and probably go through his photos, you'll see tons of other violations, like he used to park an airstream trailer constantly, or motor homes along Mango Circle. And I would have to take photos and issue violations, there'd be complaints, like no tomorrow. But there's always loose dirt in all the photos. So if I went out there for the address numbers and I noticed it, well, I would of course stop the fines, because that's, that's the right thing to do in my eyes. But that one, I never noticed.
Why, why would that be any different than loose dirt?
His loose dirt never came into compliance until.
Okay.
Many, 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 many years later. I think when the town sent me back out there.
Okay, so, so basically, you're saying that for nine years, you may have driven by and it's just always been loose dirt?
He's always had loose dirt, yeah.
And.
And that's what I'm saying, if you look through photos of other violations after, I guarantee you, a long mango cir- circle has always been loose dirt, because he. Regularly, regularly would store his airstream trailer, unregistered vehicles, whatever he had. That he was working on, and he would end up complying after violations, but you will see in all the photos the loose dirt.
So you violate him, he comply, move it.
But, but I would never have to re-violate the loose dirt, because that's already a running thing, you can't, you know, I couldn't do that, but yes, for those other ones. But that's why I know that the properties always had loose dirt over there.
So for example, when you would go out there and see an airstream trailer parked on the loose dirt, would you tell him, hey, did you know your loose dirt issue's still running?
No, because he was at the meeting and he knew, so I don't, I don't harass people when they know something and that's the option they chose, I don't, that's, I kind of feel it's not my place.
Did you ever have a discussion with him about how big the lean has become or anything like that, just to kind of?
And I've never had a discussion with anybody about their leans, I just don't feel, if, if you come to me and ask me. You know, but I, I kind of would feel disrespectful if I go to someone and say, hey, let's discuss your leans.
Or, hey, how about, the lean's now fifty thousand dollars?
I honestly didn't know he had, you know, he kind of just moved on to the next case, so I didn't really know he was still.
So you weren't keeping track of this lean as it's growing and growing and growing?
Town Hall keeps track of them, not me.
Okay. Okay, Dana, that helps me, because I'm just trying to.
But I'm gonna try to find you pictures.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
The other question I had of Mr. Whitaker. Was, and I asked Mr. Whitaker to come tonight, by the way, just so the council knows, I gave him a call ahead of time, I said, Mr. Whitaker, you should probably come to this meeting, because it's a. A public meeting and you probably need to just be present, and he did not know that the meeting was tonight. So I said, you need to come. And the question I have for you, Mr. Whitaker, is what, could you explain to us what you did with sod? And irrigation along two streets, but why didn't you comply on the other half? Could you explain, well, according to this entry on five nineteen, two thousand and eleven, you were only at half compliance?
So in one of the, Dana and I actually met, we met a lot during this, this time, she would come out before the meetings and inspect, we would walk the property. And then we would, you know, so immediately, once, so the front of the property at that time. Was, was, the grass was, was dying in front, so that's the Corandus side, so that's the, that's the part facing the, the park, that's where that is. That's all I ever thought that this was. And I thought that, when I, so we immediately came in compliance, so we spent several thousand dollars on new irrigation for the entire property. And we spent a lot of money on, I think it was fifteen pallets of sod. Because we decided to do the whole property, so the property is actually relatively large, because it, it wraps around, it, it T-bone. Goes from Corandus and then Lake Clark Drive, so anyway, so it goes like, it's like, it's an L. The front part of the property didn't even get taken care of, and, and we did that immediately. Ongoingly, Dana would come in and we would inspect, and she would walk the property with me, and in one of the pictures. When we, when we're referring to loose dirt, I just want to make sure that we're all very clear. There's loose dirt on every property in Lake Clark Shores. My park across the street has more loose dirt.
Can we just focus in on the question, and if you could answer that, I don't need to hear about the other properties, no disrespect, but I'd like to respect my time, my, my council's time.
Well, no, no, I, I have no problem you talk, you saying that, I think you should tell us what, what you see in other places, I think.
Listen, with all due respect, I'm running this meeting, if you want to answer this question, that would be what I want to hear. If we ask you a question about all the other properties, well, we can deal with that at that time. Why don't we talk about your property and what you did with regard to sod and irrigation, because that was the question.
Yeah, well, I, I understand. Mayor, what, what you're, what you're asking, but I think in relation to the origin story of all this. This topic was specifically addressed at the meeting, I asked for minutes on the previous meeting. Because when I did come in compliance with the front, so we did put new irrigation, we did put, which was expensive. We didn't just go, Dana, I'm gonna ignore this, that was not the case. It never has been, it never has been that, I want to make sure that, that's the point, is, we were in communication, I did come to the meeting, I addressed the, the code board. And I said, listen, what, what we're doing is no different, no different than very expensive properties. Around me in Lake Clark Shores, across the street and, and the park. So it has actually, I think, everything to do respectfully to, to this discussion, because. When we're talking about what was the original concern of the property, it was because the front part, we had just gone. And, and, and I think it's, it has to note, we were in the middle of a big recession back then, and we had three kids under six years old at the time. So life was crazy back in two thousand and eight, nine, ten, for everybody. When Dana came to us and said, hey, this needs to get taken, and I want to make sure, Dana's always been incredibly fair, there's, there's not me pointing a finger or us trading. You know, did you do or did you not, it's never been the case. Dana would walk in the property and say, Dan, you need to put, you know, things here, so while this was happening, I continually said, Dana. I don't, you know, this is representative, and, and not only my property across the street or our park, where they had actually more loose dirt. On Corandus than my entire property combined, so I have like a third, point three-eighths of an acre. If we were to go today, if we were to go back four years ago, if we were to go back and we would just see where the hedge is. Well, there's tremendous sister, there's, there's several hundred feet of non-mulched loose dirt. So as, back in, back in the time, and I don't, I'm not putting words in Dana's mouth or the council or the code. But when we came in compliance with the property. You know, we did put new sod, we did put new irrigation, we redid the entire property, I came to council and I, and I think the gentleman sitting here. And at that time, he agreed with me, he's like, yeah, you know, there was actually a continuation at that time, so it wasn't really a compliance, it was like, hey. After that meeting, after that code board meeting, I thought, you know, because it actually says in the pictures. Is this loose dirt or not, you know, is this little section here and is this little section there? I think the debate was, what are, at the time, the debate was, what are we going to call loose dirt? How much of this is loose dirt, is it, is it, if I'm gonna have. Sheffler shrubs or banyan shrubs, right? In front of that shrub. Is it six inches, is it eight inches, is it, is it five feet? Because our property has over a hundred palm trees. So we have very large bets. To, to mulch the entire property would cost thousands of dollars. That was the conversation. The clarification of loose dirt was, was, here's. We are in compliance with the, the Lake Clark Shores, I'm sorry, Lake Clark Corandus, right, so you drive by my house. All new sod was put in, all irrigation, look great. Around the side, the reason that this continued was loose dirt was very broad. It still is to this day.
All right, let's back up, so you leave, you attend the May twenty-fifth, twenty-eleven meeting, right? You're found in violation?
Well, it was actually a continuation from that, it wasn't really, it was, it was more of, let's understand this, because that's why I requested the, the notes back then.
All right, well, let's back up, you're found to still be in violation, I used to be the vice chair of the code board, I served many years. When a person would come in, and it wasn't resolved, you remain in violation, and still when you left that meeting, you remained in violation?
Yeah, but there was, there were ongoing.
So you knew you remained in violation on May twenty-fifth, two thousand and eleven?
No, I, I actually thought that we came in compliance after that meeting, when I, because I met with Dana after that meeting. That, they didn't say, case, so at that code, I just want to make sure we're talking the same thing.
Me too.
When we were at code, they didn't go, case closed, you're done, we're finding you, it actually continued.
Well, they had to make a motion on it, they had to say, I move on case number, whatever the case number was, you know, eleven dash eleven seventy deterioration in the property. Remains in violation, and then whatever the rest of the order is, they have to say in the order. In the motion, what they're gonna do. And you were present for that, right?
Yeah, but there was still a debate.
I understand that there's a debate, but it's very simple, you were there when they found you to still remain in violation, right?
No.
No, you left the meeting before they made that order, before they made that ruling?
No, let me finish.
Okay.
So, when we, when that meeting, so I said, I like, so it's in the notes, I like the Palm Beach look. That look is no different than the majority of the houses like our shores, there was a conversation that happened amongst the, the code. They, they said at that meeting, yeah, let's, let's understand this more, right, like, there's more, similar to what happened in the last meeting. Let's understand this loose dirt conversation, because, and speaking with Mr. Clark, and speaking with, there is no definition to this loose dirt. There's zero definition to this.
I understand, but you're, you're missing what I'm saying, tell me what your understanding was when you left that meeting, I, is it?
My understanding was to, to meet with Dana.
All right, so let's talk about that.
Point out.
When did you meet with Dana after May twenty-fifth, two thousand and eleven?
Mayor, I wish I could give you exact dates, this, this happened.
Did you, were you still living at your property on June second, two thousand and eleven?
We've lived there for twenty-two years.
All right, so you still receive mail there?
Yeah.
All right, so what'd you do when you got the order that was mailed on six to two thousand and eleven, the order that came from the May twenty-fifth hearing?
So, I, in our last meeting, so I, I don't want to. When we, when we, when we talk about these orders, and we, when we talk about these, these letters, we felt we were in compliance. That, that, we felt we were in compliance, it wasn't us saying anything, right? Now, when the next meeting came up, I thought that the, the board, not, I didn't follow through, I didn't call Dana.
June twentieth meeting.
I don't know the date, sir, I'm sorry.
All right, so you get the order on June second, you're not disputing that you got the order that said you were still in violation, right?
I don't remember any order saying we were.
But you're not disputing it?
The only meeting I remember going to, and the last correspondence, was the last code date of us trying to understand the definition of loose dirt.
I understand, so on May twenty-fifth, two thousand and eleven, you're present for that, June second, you're not disputing that an order was mailed and, to your residents?
If I, if you don't have proven record, then I will dispute, because I don't remember.
Okay, sounds good. So June twentieth, two thousand and eleven, there's another code board hearing, and you're not present for that, right?
So at that meeting, I left a message, I left a note, a long note, so I remember, so I talked to my wife when we left, she was sitting back here. We wrote a letter. We put it in the, the mail slot here at the board. And we put, this is what, we, we weren't able to make the meeting, so we said, hey, we weren't able to meet, can we postpone? But here's what we have found, this loose dirt, and then we described everything that was going on and to let us know. We haven't heard anything since that, that, that message that we left, so, but I.
So you didn't get, what about the order that was delivered by hand to your address on June twenty-ninth, two thousand and eleven?
To our knowledge, last time we talked, last time we were at this meeting, I was saying that we had a neighbor next to us. We feel that the majority of whatever's left on that fence, so our fence faces the street, it was five feet from the street. We feel that, that those letters were taken, because we have multiple, multiple encounters of a, of a neighbor. But let me, let me answer this question, had we known, had we known that this was still in violation? Had we known that this would lead to a hundred and ninety thousand dollar lean? We had taken the effort, we had taken the effort to meet with Dana, to continually go as means to go, we've done sod, we've done the irrigation. If you needed us to put ten bags of mulch. Ten bags, thirty bucks, to, to go along Corandus, now, and when we were, when she was telling me about the airstream, at that time, our entire property was open. And again, we have a large, so we have one street, one day, Dana said, Dana, can I, can I address Dana? Yeah.
Sure.
We had, we had a neighbor, how many times per day did that particular neighbor call on Dale Porche, my house, all the house around? You told me that sometimes you get ten phone calls from Proben Dale? Was that her name?
Yes.
You said sometimes you got ten phone calls a day for six years, am I exaggerating from that, from Proben Dale?
I mean, shoot.
Look, we're gonna redirect this back to what matters.
Well, I think it matters.
Here's what matters to me.
Well.
Okay?
Yeah, fair.
Right?
Yeah, yeah, Mayor, I'm not disputing it.
I, this to me isn't an issue of loose dirt. You can say loose dirt, you can have all those fun phrases, you can exaggerate the numbers to a hundred and ninety thousand, do whatever you want.
Wait, is it?
No, it's a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Oh, I thought it was a hundred and eighty.
Seven hundred dollars just for this particular violation, on top of the fact that we literally told you, I told you, the council told you, come back next meeting. With the second Tuesday of every month, and you just heard from our fellow council member, you had to be reminded of today. Because you didn't know, when we specifically told you, we're rolling this to the next meeting, let's get some more information, come back next meeting. So I don't know where the confusion is, but I certainly don't believe it's coming from the Town of Lake Clark Shores.
Mayor, why would you think that I'm actually saying it's coming from the town, I'm not, I've never said.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you're saying, you didn't hear them tell you you weren't in violation and you didn't receive these notices, and because you don't have, I don't have. A, a photo or video or otherwise some other type of proof that it was mailed or hand-delivered, other than my officers of the town saying they hand-delivered this.
Mayor, I was, let me just, I.
So wait.
You don't mind, I'd like to respond.
I'm, I do mind, I need you to wait, because I want you to address these specific issues. If you're, if you're just for the sake of discussion, not disputing, you received a mail order on the, on the June second. Then you got another order finding you in violation, June twenty-ninth, then you got another order delivered on the twenty-fifth. Then you got the lean recorded on August twenty-fourth, you're meaning to tell me that all these things took place? And you intentionally either did nothing or were completely aloof to what was going on, because a neighbor was just plucking stuff off of your fence? Is that it? Is it one of those two? Because I, I don't think you're going to tell me you intentionally ignored it. So I'm supposed to believe a neighbor just picked all these things off of your fence? And what about your mailbox? Is he going in your mailbox and taking things out of your mailbox too? Is this guy committing federal crimes? That's the issue for me. That's what I want you to explain. How you left the meeting not knowing you were in violation, how you left this meeting not knowing you're supposed to come back today to address these issues before us? And then what happened with all the stuff that was mailed or hand delivered? That's what I want to. I don't want to know about any other property or anything like that, or here about loose dirt. To me, this is you explaining to me how you did not ignore everything the town did in order to say, hey, listen, you're in violation, work with us. Show me how you just said, you, I, I, that's what I need to understand because to me, I don't see it. I hear all these excuses why you shouldn't be found in violation to begin with. Okay. Well, we're not here rehearing the violation. We're here to understand what your position is, why you shouldn't be held responsible for the liens that you incurred. What did the town of Lake Clark shores do wrong? What were we derelict in doing and perfecting the lien? Where did we go wrong? Explain that to me. But first, let's start.
You asked fifteen questions.
I asked him more than that.
Yeah.
First, excuse me, stop. Just tell me, just tell me.
Yeah.
What you did with the delivery of the mail. That's fine. Tell me what you did with the delivery of the mail. I want to know about the mail. How did you not receive these? Talk to me. That's the issue.
Okay, so, uh, council, um, this feels very aggressive. It feels very.
It is.
Uh, I don't, I don't understand why. We're just really talking about a.
Sir, I just want to know what happened with the mail. I keep asking you a question, you give me different answers.
I, Mr. Mayor, I really, I, I, this occurred last meeting. Um, it's happening again. We, uh, worked with Dana while the code enforcement was going on. We didn't ignore it. Um, we thought that we were in, um, and what we, this loose dirt is, is very vague. Uh, at the time, we did not ignore Dana, uh, when she came out. Um, we walked the property. Uh, there's evidence of what my property is on every household in Lake Clark shores. There's a hundred and, correct me, I'm sorry. I, I don't want to inflate numbers.
Hundred and seventy-five thousand.
There's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar fine for thirty dollars, maybe less, maybe five bags of, of mulch. This is not a gross, um, this does not make Lake Clark shores look anything bad. In fact, the, the park across the street and even in front here has more loose dirt than my entire property combined. So what I'm asking the council is a fair judgment on what they think, um, twenty feet by two feet of loose dirt is, is fairly charged. And, and I would like to end with that.
And Mr. Whitaker, I just want to know about the mail. Did you, what did you do when you received the mail?
I feel like you're attacking me. I'm going to stop. I, I present my case.
All right. So we don't even have an answer to what happened with the mail. I wasn't attacking you, sir. I just wanted a simple answer to the questions. Right? You gave, you gave, you had, you spoke for way longer than I did and gave me no information as to what it was that you did with regard to all the mail you received. That's all I want to know. What happened with the mail? Did your, did your neighbor pluck it out of your mailbox? Forget the fence. What happened with the mail?
I, I would appreciate being respectful. I've already made my, my suggestions. I would like to.
And your suggestion is still what, thirty-five hundred dollars, thirty-two hundred dollars? What was it?
Well, we opened up last time to what you thought was fair. Um, and I thought that if I calculated the amount of, um, time that was put into this, that was my only best guess. Uh, I'm open to understanding other ways this is handled. I just don't think that, um, you know, fifteen feet times two feet of, of not mulched, um, dirt around a hedge is, is worth a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And that's all I'd like to say.
I appreciate it. I want you to know, to me, that's not what this is about. That's not what this is about. That's why all the talk about it, it's not what it's about.
Well, that's your opinion. You, you have an opinion. You're one of five council members. You have an opinion of what it's about. And I, I think we have the right to talk as council members.
I, I was here meetings, I work with Dana. I, I had conversations that were not able to. And, um, I don't think this is about mail. I think it's about fairness. I think it's about, um, a town resident who's been here, raised a family, I'm a third generation native. Uh, I don't think this is about mail. I think it's about, um, is there loose dirt that's this ambiguous?
Mr. Whitaker, you please need to use the mic. No one can hear you outside the room. Not outside the room.
Okay.
Not outside.
So, so I just.
We have to use our microphones. That's all he's asking.
So I, I just want to end to that. I, we, you know, did we know that there was an incurring fine? We did not. I don't know how much you want to debate that. I'm telling you. Um, did we know that, uh, um, when we're speaking with Dana, uh, and we're walking around the property and showing her and having conversations and investing in our property and making sure.
I've never been on your property though. You keep saying that. I've never walked your property off the street and going to your front door, but you had a fence.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that everybody understands I've never walked your entire property with.
Well, not the back, but the front was.
In the street.
Okay.
So I just, I do recall.
Yeah.
Just the street, but I've never walked your property.
Right. Okay. So, um, this, this, uh, loose dirt, I, I tried to understand what it is. Um, I've looked at every indication of the definition of loose dirt. It's in, there, there is no definition of loose dirt for Lake Clark shores. When we, when we did take care of the property in the front, uh, the conversation became, there's pictures showing a question mark where there's a border of a, of a shrub. And then there's literally less than six inches, uh, next to the pavers we had on the property. And I had a question, is that loose dirt? To me, that's, that's, um, it's not. Um, but I don't know that. I, and we, that was debated at the, the code enforcement meeting. There was a continuation to that of, you know, let's understand this more board on what our definition is left loose dirt. Uh, we are here, my family, my wife and I, um, we work really hard. The reason I was, I was working when, when Val called me, um, there's no excuse. I'm not asking for an excuse. I'm not saying that we're here to go, this meeting wasn't important. Obviously it's important. Since we were notified about this, I was the one that asked, uh, the, the city to come out and inspect it. So that wasn't, that wasn't generated by the city. Once immediately I found out from Melissa that this was going on, so I called Dana or I called the, the town, they dispatched Dana. She said, yes, it's in compliance. Um, again, we're really talking about a very small, uh, section of our property. Out of the entire less than a fourth quarter acre, I would tell you it's probably less than thirty square feet. But, um, again, we're not reliving the two thousand eleven. What, what we hope is that you aren't going to find, my family, a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars for something that isn't making the town a hundred and seventy-four. It's, is not making the town look bad. Um, that street looks great. Um, at the time, we were asked to put up a fence because we did have an airstream trailer. And we did have a company vehicle. We had a neighbor call the code violation on every proper ground is for dozens. And it, and it was a nuisance to everybody. That's fine. We're not, I'm not here to debate that. But I think that also tells a lot of the story as to what was happening during that time. But, um, at the end of the day, mayor, I'm not here to debate mail or anything. We're just asking for a fair amount to pay the town for what we think is not, um, even, it's not even worth a hundred dollars. If we were to leave this meeting, right, and all of us will, and we're going to go to our houses, you're going to pass by hundreds, if not thousands of square feet of loose dirt. And that's, I'm sorry, but that's, it's just not fair for the, for, you're asking, it's just not fair. And, but the reason we're here is because once we were notified, um, once I was notified that this was happening, I immediately called the town. We immediately said, what's, what's the code? They pointed that out. They asked me to cover it. It took me three minutes to cover it with very minimal effort to cover the loose dirt. Um, and at the time during this happening, we were asked, we saw it, we resided, we were asked to re-irrigate, we re-irrigated. And I don't know how to, can, and so that's, if I could just end with that, I appreciate it.
Sure. Any discussion amongst the council?
Yeah. Dana, I have some questions.
Sure.
So his dispute is loose dirt. I take it that when he's talking about loose dirt, he's talking about flower beds. Because I've seen the pictures and I don't have that kind of loose dirt. Um, I, I understand your dilemma and your position. But I read the file. I sat here for three hours the other day and read the files so that I could help myself understand and the council, why something like this, and I haven't made it a secret, gets let go. One of the things that I noticed on the forums, constant complaints, constant complaints, constant complaints. That means that somebody around you cares the way that looks and she's obligated to go out there and, and do that. So, okay, so we've got loose dirt. We have more loose dirt here in town hall than we do there. I'm guessing that's flower beds, yes?
No.
I don't, I don't think so either. I don't think so either.
Did anybody, so I don't know, did anybody ever read the actual ordinance? Because the ordinance is the same, but our numbers have changed. So I just want to make sure, has everyone read the ordinance?
Yeah.
Yes, well, because he keeps saying the definition thing. So, uh, great, he wants to hear it in all fairness. Uh, so under the definitions, thirty-four nineteen, which is the current, because Munich code redid our ordinances, but the ordinance is still the same. It's molder mildew, rotting, raw or unfinished wood or loose dirt, comma, fill sand, comma, or ungrasped areas which will cause dirt, comma, sand or dust to be transported from the property. So if you read it that way, the loose dirt is defined in that definition. So loose dirt is dirt that can blow onto another property. So I keep trying to look for the photos. I don't see those exact ones, but it's.
Which is right here on our timeline.
Very common.
Just read.
That they're in my computer if, if you end up needing them. Uh, and all the other photos which will show that whole side of the area of the dirt. So I remember he had some ficus or eureka palms. It was one of those. And there was dirt, but it, it went all the way out to Mango Circle, which that is a private road that is his property. So I'm trying to describe it a little better for you. Yes, I believe he pays for the asphalt too.
Okay, so, you know, Mr. Whitaker, this puts us in a very difficult position, position here also. I mean, we're all residents, as you said. We all work hard to maintain. I know I have six children and I work very hard. I'm one of the only guys up here that doesn't have an office job, so I can understand. But I need to understand, this has been going on since two thousand eleven. And there's a delay. Once a lien is recorded from two thousand eleven to twenty twenty. That's all, that's, it's a big delay in there. Um, and two thousand eleven recession was pretty much all that kind of stuff. Okay, so we got the loose dirt. We've seen the pictures. We do all this. So, all right, so you got a hundred and seventy-five seven there and it's, uh, since two thousand eleven, there's been seventeen code violations. Somebody's complaining that somebody doesn't like it. It's not the town of Lake Clark shores harassing or doing this, doing that. She's doing her job.
Yes.
Um, and she knows she's been to everybody's. She's got a very difficult job, if you ask me.
Yeah.
And I respect what she does.
Yeah.
So, all right, so let's go to the other violations, um, that equals seven thousand dollars that go back even to two thousand seventeen. I saw the fence. I saw the trailer, um, construction debris, uh, other stuff being left out early. Um, you were in compliance. I did read in here where Dana did stop on the, um, for the, uh, for the numbers on the house, that kind of stuff, which just in, in our, and we have the fire rescue here. They can tell you that's a safety issue. If they have to dispatch a vehicle here and there's no house numbers, heaven forbid that you or your children are in a fire and they need to find your, your residence and they can't. That's, so that's a major thing. So she stopped that. The third code enforcement board hearing, you're not present. Which, you know, we've got to work, we got to this, we got to that. I'm just trying to understand that this got this out of control. Because I mean, that's a lot of money and I know you're a working guy, just like all of us. We all work up here. We all have our stuff. But now we're left in a very difficult situation. I think what my, this is my opinion.
Yeah.
Because I've seen the pictures. I know this neighborhood like the back of my hand. The loose dirt I think you're referring to is not the same as your loose dirt that I saw in the pictures. I think that's a different concept. Flower beds and beddings that are not mulched, because I particularly don't use mulch in my flower beds. Um, I don't know where we ever got that from. If it was Palm Beach, they, they should stop. It's not really as good as they say it is. So that being said, Dana, back to you. Um, you've gone over there. I, I know you're accommodating. I know you're not verbally abusive or any of that kind of stuff. And you've never been on the property, but you did take all those pictures. Now, I have one other one in there that we get a lot of these phone calls, Mr. Whitaker, as council member, because our cell phone numbers are put out there for call us, you know, if there's a problem that we need to help with. Was somebody complaining about the vehicle with the trailer parked on Mango Circle? Because there's a picture in there that was a code violation with, uh, I don't know, it was a single axle, double axle enclosed trailer hooked to, um, uh, a truck, a vehicle. And it says it was being parked over there. It looked like it was being parked in that swale. That's in that file.
There, there's probably lots of those.
Well, that's why I'm saying, I mean, there's been seventeen violations.
He parked them there.
Since two thousand eleven.
Parks them there.
I just think seventeen violations is a lot and it makes it hard for me to say, you know, that you're working with her. I, I don't know. I mean, that's my stuff.
But with the seventeen.
Sometimes the officers would complain about them parked there also.
I understand.
Because of the fire.
Listen, we are trying to maintain the residential atmosphere here in the town of Lake Clark shores. And we haven't had to raise taxes in nine years, maybe ten, simply because our property values are doing so well. And this is all part of it. And I know you understand that because.
Absolutely.
You look on pop and you look at what you purchased your property for back then and what it's worth now, you're doing well. You're in good shape.
Yeah.
Um, at which is because we've maintained this residential atmosphere that we really want to do here. So.
Yeah, and no dispute there, Mr. Freeble.
Okay.
Um, I think, uh, this particular person I would call as soon, like if we left our trashcans out, if, if they would call this particular person.
Sure.
Um, I could give you proof of this. I'm not, I'm not, is, is if we left our, or if I parked on the side. So we have two, two entries to the property, one in the back, one in the front. If, um, I wanted to pull up and not pull in and leave it overnight, that's what we did.
Which you can do with your vehicles, yes. So that was, if that was ever complained about, but she complained about everything, but
Yeah.
just the trailers and the airstream and stuff like that was.
Well, the airstream, um, was thirty-five feet.
For the unregistered vehicles.
Yeah. So, so we had bought and sold, um, from, um, it's called GovDeals. So we would get, uh, a vehicle that was like two or three thousand dollars. And so if that space was occupied, I'd leave that overnight. She would call the next morning for sure. I'm not, I'm not disputing you about that. But I think that's the origin story is, um, we would, you know, I'd pull on the sign. We have a, we have a, I'm not disputing this, this isn't, but I'm just trying to.
No, I, I know you're, I know where your property is. One of my best friends grew up right around the corner from there. So it's, I'm, I'm just trying to understand because I agree with you. This is a lot of money and this is a very difficult decision.
Yeah.
However.
I just want to make sure that this particular person did create a tremendous amount of complaints with, with, if, if there's like, there's, there's hedges on the side. You know, if there, if the hedge went out. So, so we dealt with this for a long time.
Sure.
Um, I'm not saying, you know, do you guys want a car on the, on the street? No, I agree with this. I'm not, I'm not disputing that. Um, but did we leave it out there and the next morning Dana left a message and saying, move it? And, and she would come in or she would, you know, say, hey, you know, leave us a door. And then I'd call and she says, yeah, you know, please park. No dispute there. Was not intentional. We did not, we did not leave the vehicle out to make her angry. It was a matter of.
But you don't, you don't have any fines for your vehicles though, right?
No, no, I'm just responding to the, the, to the swale and, and what, what this is all about.
That was one of the pictures that was in there that had a complaint.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm just going by what I saw.
The person that complained would just complain about anything that was in their travels on their way.
And, and they're, you know.
I have lots of people that do that, yes.
Yeah.
And you are obligated to respond to that, correct?
And her complaints were never.
Yes, and it's not always easy on you to do that.
Yeah.
I just, my only problem here, and I'm going to leave it at this, and I'm with the other council members have their, uh, say, it just seems like a long time has passed and there's no communication. And you've been notified and you've been notified and, um, some of this, uh, you know, I just, uh, and I. uh, you know, I just, uh, and I agree, saying somebody was taking your stuff off this or out of your mailbox or stuff, it's a pretty, it's a federal offense, I mean, you know.
Well, we, we, we had, we had called the police.
Okay, well, you see, that's news. I didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah. No, I've, I've got records of him
Okay.
Throwing urine on our cars, uh, a variety of things.
Okay. All right, it's just
I don't know, we have reports of him stealing your mail.
Never called the police. Well, I, the, the only reason I'm bringing
I know the two of you
No, no.
Went back and forth.
Yeah, the only reason I brought that up is that's my only thought, is when that, when you guys left the message on the outside fence, that's, that's my, my best guess.
I don't think he stole your mail. I promise you that. I really don't think he stole your mail.
I don't, I, I, I don't, I'm just saying that when they left the message on our, our fence, right? To me, if we didn't get it, I, did it fly off? Did it go under a car? Did it rain that day? I don't know what happened to that letter. I don't. I'm sorry. But when they
Because that's what you do, right? You'll leave it in the fence.
Some of them say they were mailed.
Yeah, we don't know what happened to those. We don't. I, I did not know about this fine. I've, I've already said that. I'm not going to change my position on it. We did not know that there's a, a fifty thousand, a twenty thousand, a seventy-five thousand, a hundred, a hundred. We did not know. And had we, we would have gone to Home Depot like we did, put down the mulch, called Dan and say, is this enough? Good, thank you. Let's get this off our plate. That's what we would have done.
I'm good.
Councilman Pavone. I mean, you guys have covered a lot, so I want to continue covering the same thing. Are you, are you open to changing your offer today? Are you, are you, will you present a better offer to us of what you would like to see the lean reduced to? Did you come with a number or no? Or you keep it the same?
Uh, I think, um, the last meeting, I remember Mr. Clark bringing up, hey, this, this ordeal went on for four or five months, and I think we're actually going to start somewhat of that conversation at the prior meeting. I honestly want to say that I think the five of you are, are fair. I really do. I really do. I know that we're having some frustration moments, but I want to say that, you know, do you want me to say twenty thousand or fifty thousand or ten thousand? We're, and, and Mr. Freeble, I, I know, you know, we're, we're kind of saying, what is a bed and what's not? I, again, I, I don't know the definition. I don't know how much, many, you know, but when this was all heard, you know, when they asked me to put sod, we put sod. When we put the irrigation, we put irrigation. When we talked, we talked. When I came to the meetings, we talked. I, I would like, uh, I don't know a fair offer. I really don't. I, I think, I think ten thousand is a lot for, for something that I see everywhere across the street from my house this morning. Uh, across, I, I don't know what's fair. I really don't. This loose dirt, if it said, if it said every property that has loose dirt, which is not covered, has to have between the hedge forty-eight inches front and back of the property, so it's defined. I don't, you, you follow me? I just don't, I don't really know how to answer that question. We're, you know, we started this meeting in prayer. We started this, you know, hey, you know, let, let, we're all, we're all people. I, I'm not trying to get one over on Lake Clark Shores. I'm not trying. I, I've never called Dana, and she's been professional with us every day. The other day I saw her before this meeting. I said, hey, I've always appreciated how you've, have you talked to me? I, I, I think that all of you guys, I think that of everyone in the council, you know, however you interpret this, this, this goal isn't for me to say, Lake Clark Shores is bad. Miss Freeble, it's never been that, you know? I've never said that, you know, my neighbor has acted out of, I just think that she has her own expectations. And when she came out of her house that morning and, and went down the street, she had enough time to say, let's get this, this, and this. But did that cause a tremendous amount of workload for Dana and the four or five people around her neighborhood? Yeah. But all fair, we're not here for that, um, and I get that. So, um, I don't know how to answer that, Albert. I, I just want to say that, you know, we're hoping that this is fairly assessed to, to what I think is, is symptomatic throughout Lake Clark Shores and every neighborhood in Florida.
We're, we're, we're a hundred percent compliant though now, right? Correct me if I'm wrong.
We are compliant.
Yeah.
As soon as I was notified by Melissa, I called the town. We scheduled the compliance. Dana told me what to do. I put it down. She came back out. She gave me a compliance. Our property looks wonderful. We have great green grass and hopefully you drive, drive by and you would agree, um, you know, uh, it's new roof, new paint.
Looks good.
Uh, we were, you know, I will tell you, two thousand ten, two thousand nine was rough for us, you know, so, um, when we had to put down mulch and, and irrigation, you know, that ten thousand dollars, it did bite down on us a little bit, but we, we took care of it. We did not say no. We did not say Dana, you know, in the picture, it's got question marks of what's loose dirt. That's where we left off. I think that there's been time spent on this. You know, Mr. Clark's been, you know, him and I've traded many emails, and you just said you've been there for three hours. I don't want that. I don't want this to, to occupy your off time. Uh, and, and, and again, at any point, if this, you know, Melissa would called me, you know, the fifth day after that and said, hey, Dan, you know, this is what's going on, I would have called. I would have asked, let's get in compliance. Let's get this done. It wasn't anything other than that fact. It wasn't us going, you know, we're not going to take care of this, even though we took care of what the majority of the complaint was, so. I don't know. I think it's fair to compensate the town's, um, ongoing expenses, for sure. I think, you know, as a, as a, as a town member, if I was there and this person was here, I'd be like, yeah, there's been some resources spent, you know, pay up. Absolutely. I, I do not dispute that. And that's why I tentatively came up with that offer. I said, hey, you know, if this is the labor burden rate times this, and this is the amount of hours I could, I can guess. Um, are we in compliance? Yes. Everything all being equal, you know, did this create a nuisance to the town? Absolutely not. You know? We, I did pay for the road on that Lake Clark Shores, so that, my road, that came out of my pocket. I paid several thousand, well, all of us did. Paid for that road. We continue. Um, so there's ongoing untown expenses that we've been obligated to pay, and we have.
Sure.
Um, we did put up a fence when that was requested. See, I'll, I'll speak for you. Do you remember that conversation about putting up a fence?
The fence was recommended because you stored a lot of stuff on the side that people could see in the trailer. That was what I recommended.
Right.
To help you.
Yeah, and we did right away. So she, Dana came out and said, hey, let's, let's hide, because I have a maintenance company. So I have a trailer. I have a two fifty van.
You have a maintenance company now.
Yeah. Back then to two thousand ten, we did.
He's always had it.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
I had the gem in between there, too. Um, so I've always had a trailer.
Excuse just for one second. I can't stay any longer, so I didn't know if anybody had any other questions for me. And I will say, if you have any complaints, and Ms. Whitaker, right? No, okay. Oh, I was like, okay, so if you have any, if you have any questions for me, or if you wanted to ask me other questions, you can give me a call. So I was confused. I was like, I don't think, so, and the same for you.
Does anybody have questions for Dana before she leaves?
No, but for the record, I just want to make sure that nothing's being interpreted that Dana is not doing her job, or she's never been unfair or unprofessional. She's, she's an incredible asset to the town, and, and she's always treated us politely.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I mean it. Um, but when she recommended that, hey, you know, when this, this particular person, uh, goes down the street, um, let's, let's put a fence.
Oh, well, he kept looking, he said my wife, I was like.
That, so we, we, we pulled a permit like the week later, and we put up a ten thousand dollar fence. I mean, it's two hundred feet of, of, of wood. Um, so we did that. I will tell you, since we did that, things got calmer. Um, uh, up until the, uh, the, um, the mailbox numbers issue. But other than that, the recommendation was, hey, let's put a fence on the side so that when she goes down the street, she doesn't see the, the two fifty van and the trailer, and we have had RVs for a long time. So we had an airstream RV. We had a Winnebago from any, um, but once we put up that, uh, that fence, a lot of this, these issues went down because she'd just go down and, and leave, so.
I'm, I'm no more.
Sorry, I don't know.
No, no, you're, you're all right.
My goal was not, not to answer, but I just don't know how to answer that.
Vice Mayor Shalob.
Mr. Whitaker, I'm just going to just think out loud. On March twenty-third, two thousand eleven, you were brought in front of the code board for violation of section twenty-six, hyphen twenty-six of paragraph three. Everybody keeps on referring to it as loose dirt, not what the violation was. At that time, it appears from the record March twenty-third, two thousand eleven, that you were not present. But you were given until, you were found to be in violation, and you were given until April twenty-seventh to comply, or fifty dollars per day fine would be imposed retroactive to March twenty-third, two thousand and eleven. That motion was made, and that was approved four zero. Subsequently, there was another hearing on April twenty-seventh, two thousand and eleven, in which you were present. And you testified that you had no problem laying sod in the front area along the two streets. Mr. Whitaker also noted that he designed his landscaping to have the effect of a beach look, which include ponds and marsh beds. They found you in violation. You were given until April twenty-seventh to comply, or fifty dollars a day would be imposed. You were given until May sixteenth to sod and irrigate the areas along the two streets, or fifty dollars retroactive to March twenty-third, two thousand and eleven. The case will come back for status on how to proceed, and the motion was passed three to. On May twenty-fifth, two thousand and eleven, you were brought back before the code board in which you were present. The code board found that you were continued to be in violation and gave you May sixteenth to sod retroactive to twenty-third, two thousand and eleven may be imposed. Testimony was taken, and you were found to continue to be in violation, and you were given until June the twentieth to allow time to comply. Motion was made, and it was we now go to the meeting of June twenty, in which you were not present. They found that you continue to be in violation. And they gave you until that date to come into compliance, and you did not do that. Therefore, they imposed a fine retroactive, fifty dollars a day, retroactive to March twenty-third. That motion was passed and approved. On July twenty-fifth, you're back before the code board. You were not present. They found that you would continue to be in violation. And based upon the testimony that was presented, the board approved the request for a lean to be imposed upon the property for fifty dollars a day for each day the violation continues. That motion passed. You indicated that this is what I heard, that on May nineteenth, twenty-eleven, you planted sod along Corandis but not Mango Circle. And by your own testimony here today, you admit that all it would have taken was an additional ten bags of mulch to come into compliance, but you never did so. The file also request, uh, contains a request for public records prior to March two thousand nineteen by you. Do you remember that?
I did. Yeah, because I, uh, when I called into
So with that in mind, if you knew about it in two thousand and nineteen, but you testified at the last meeting, and you testified today again that you did not know about the um, but you made a public request prior to March of two thousand and nineteen for your file. So that troubles.
That's what I was notified by Melissa.
Two thousand and nineteen.
When was the request, um, to have the property inspected?
On October the second, two, twenty twenty.
While we were, uh,
There, there's a notation in the timeline. Dana visited the property, asked that he put ground cover along Mango Circle, dirt under the, dirt under the hedges, and asked Whitaker, Whitaker that he notify her when he fixed the loose dirt over a year and a half later.
I don't know the timeline. I'm, I don't, I don't. When, when I was notified by Melissa of the lean, the outstanding lean, I would have to go back and find out the course of the events to, to answer that question. I'm trying.
My notations here suggest that on or about September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, Nash, Melissa Nash, asked for status on all the liens on your property. A year and a half after you asked for a public records request, that teaches me that you knew about the, the lean. But your testimony last week, last month, and today, and I wrote it down, we did not know about the lean. That, to me, is a conflict in what has been presented here so far. Now.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure of the timeline. As soon as we knew, I called the town and, and asked.
You're missing my point.
Well.
Not true. On or before March two thousand and nineteen, almost two and a half years ago, you asked for a public record request for your file. That's in your file, sixteen twenty-one Corandis.
How did I ask for that? I don't, when you say this, I've been, we, we've, I've been in here with multiple, um, construction. So we've done many of different projects. Um, maybe I didn't, we have, we have all of our permits. We, and I think that's all in one file. If you're saying that I either said or did or did not see it, or I didn't open up to that particular side, what I'm telling you is, when we found out the lean from Melissa, we immediately took care of it. I don't know if that public request file was, I've been in the building many times in the last ten years.
You're missing my point.
Why, no, I, I
Knew about the fact.
Sorry, I, I think I do know your point. I think I do.
Okay. But you knew that there was a violation.
No, you're saying I did. I, I did not.
You were there.
Where? When you say there.
I'll go back.
Wait, wait, no, you said September two thousand nineteen, I asked for the file. What does that mean? Which?
Okay, I didn't, I never said that. I said prior to March two thousand and nineteen. There's a notation in the file.
Who notated it? Where does this come from? I'm sorry.
Um, that's not
We can't find it. I can't find that notation. I don't understand. What does that mean? Is that like a public records request that you're seeing? Is that like an official document I fill out? Do I, did I ask?
Look to the file, it suggests that you knew about the violations.
From who? What memo? From who?
Uh, this is from Eliza Hansen to the, uh, to the, uh, it's an internal memorandum.
I don't know.
I don't think that, but I gave you, I don't think it's it. I don't, I don't see it on the timeline.
There's an email from her that she didn't know. But her email says she didn't know when he came in. So you should probably look at that email. I don't, I don't, you're, you're bringing this up. I don't have documents in front of me that prepares me for this question. I don't know. I, I, you know, I come in, I've come in and asked for the file several times over the years. What I, what I would have liked to have known, though, every time I've seen Dana or someone else's, again, hey, Dan, you know that there's a lean going on? I've been in the, I've, I've asked for many, many building permits over the years. It would have been nice that, at, at some point, even prior to then, I would have known. Um, again, we did not know about the lean. I, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't.
You were present when they found you in violation and they, and they filed the moat, uh, and it was passed.
There's ongoing conversation during that meeting where, where we were going to go back to the property. This is what I was hoping to find, is this conversation that shows you guys that Dan was interested in finding the best answer to this question. What was the definition of a loose dirt? Why?
Respectfully, I think that that ship has sailed.
Well, I think without the loose dirt, we wouldn't be here.
That ship has That ship has sailed. You had your hearing. It was, the evidence was presented. The code board made a ruling and you were found in violation. So over ten years later, you come back and said, by the way, I
But mayor, but vice mayor, why would I go through the process of putting ten thousand dollars worth of sod irrigation to say, no, I'm not going to put?
But don't you see, you knew when you put, when you did half the sod.
I didn't put half. I put it on, in our whole frontage, not half.
You indicated right here. On May nineteenth, two thousand and eleven.
There's examples of effort.
Pictures showing sod standing along Corandus, but not Mango Circle. Whitaker was present, remains in violation and given until June twentieth to comply with the loose dirt along the street.
But there was an ongoing conversation from that. How I, if, did, how many times did I meet with Dana over this issue?
It doesn't matter to me.
It does. It means that, it means a resident was working towards an explanation. It means that I was meeting with your town. I was putting in investments. I have been putting investments in the property over the years. I did not know that there is a lien assessed. I thought that the meeting happened and they sided with me. Yeah. The big question mark where there's six inches of no dirt is represented on every property in this neighborhood. I thought we were done at that last meeting. I did not know that there's an ongoing lien. I didn't know that there is everything that we're talking about now. And when we talk about loose dirt, loose dirt is actually very important because without that, that initial citation, we wouldn't have been at the code meetings and we wouldn't be here. And this loose dirt, if you were to go out and assess my property, it's no different than everyone on this council. There's loose dirt. If there's not covered by mulch or rock, it's considered loose dirt. That's a big issue because this entire town has loose dirt, right, right out street.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We, we did not know about the lien. We wish we were
Is it not true, sir, that you, that you said at the last meeting that you would take care of the outstanding liens?
No, I sort of looked into them. You asked me, you said, hey, do you know about these? I said, no, I did not. And I said, let me look into them. And you said, okay.
Did you look into them?
Yeah.
Did you pay him?
They're still up and well. So we're asking, is there, is, is there?
Any lien?
Is there an ability to pay?
Is there any liens outstanding on your?
I'm happy to pay him.
Pardon me?
I'm happy to pay him. Yes. Well, I was told that I wouldn't need a lawyer. I was told that this was a, do I need a lawyer?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, may I ask a few questions?
I was gonna be coming back to you, Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you. Okay, so.
You know, we're all town people. There's no to make things.
Dana.
Have a continuation, I will get him.
Dan, let me add a few questions, okay? I'm not going to cross-examine you like you've been cross-examined tonight. I don't plan to yell at you and argue. I just want to ask you a few questions. I, I do see these pictures that have question marks and I'm concerned. Loose dirt, question mark, possible loose dirt, possible loose dirt. Closer shot of new sod, possible loose dirt, possible loose dirt, possible, there's at least eight pictures where the question is possible loose dirt. So I understand where you're coming from. It's like, is this loose dirt or not? And you know what? First thing I'm thinking is how much loose dirt do I have in my house? And I'm also grateful. I don't have a person like what's your name who would be calling on me every single day because I have a feeling that's why you have these violations. I didn't think it was very helpful to put that you've had seventeen code violations on a timeline. Because that's not what we asked for. We asked for timeline, not how many code violations you've had. You've satisfied the seventeen code violations. Okay. You get fined. You have a person. You take care of them. To me, that's an indication that you're trying to work and do what you're supposed to do. That's how I see the seventeen code violations. Yeah. I don't have seventeen code violations because I don't have Mrs. So-and-so near me. Right. I want to ask you. Now I want to ask you a question about timing. I did ask, when did Dan Whitaker first know? And this started a series of emails that are in our public record. One of which, one of which went from Eliza to Emily. And ultimately, in the end, the very most recent email says the question was, do you remember approximately when he, referring to you, requested the documents from you? And the whole point is we're trying to figure out, when did you request documents? I saw the public records request documents you'd prepared from, but I don't see when it was done. Ultimately, her answer was, no, unfortunately, I don't have the approximate date since it was requested verbally. So I tend to, I have a problem saying that you knew about this earlier. She says, I'm one hundred percent certain it was prior to your employment. As I stopped providing assistance with public records around that time, I hope this helps. And then they're saying, well, that must have been before March, two thousand and nineteen. And then I go through here and then Ms. Hanson says, Mr. Whitaker did in fact know about the violations when I served on the board and was what a utility customer service rep. But then she doesn't explain how you did in fact know. Now, what you told me and tell me if this is true is we've hired a person named Ms. Nash. Who is a company, who's very good and they go out and try to collect money for us. And that's the first you heard of this. And you know Ms. Nash personally.
Right. She'd called me.
Okay.
Said, I just took over or something, something. Are you familiar? I'm looking at a file. Do you want me to look into it? I'm like, absolutely. Melissa Nash is a friend of mine. So I said, well, you won't believe. And I said, yeah, thank you. And she said, oh, my gosh, you won't believe how much it is. And I said, well, how much is it? She's like, it's almost, you know, a hundred and eight thousand dollars. And I'm like, what's it about? And she's like, I don't know. I have to look into it. Do you know anything about loose dirt? I said, no. And I started sending her pictures of our property. I said, which part of the property, what's going on? So all this went on. I mean, this went on. And she said, call the town. Take care of it. I'll work on it. And, and that's what we did.
So our town on September twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty receives a request from Ms. Nash to give all the liens on your property. And then she sends us an email asking what needs to be done. So she's working as sort of not your rep, but she's just asking questions of the town for you. And then and then on October second, you're told by Dana, go out there and fix loose dirt. And there's a, a face-to-face out there and you take care of it within a month.
Yeah.
Is that how it works?
Yeah.
Okay. So I just want to make sure you're not, you're not, I mean, you're certain you did not know about these liens before Ms. Nash called you up doing her job that she does, that is trying to collect money for the town.
And, and when I was talking with her, she said, this is uncommon. I'll call it. And so my thought was, well, my opinion was I worked through her email, not call the town. Because that, that technically was her file and that file was deferred. And so that's what we had did for months after.
Okay.
Months after. And then finally I said, I'm just going to call the town. And that's when I reached out to Mr. Clark. And then that's when this, then this would begin. I said, can I talk to the code? And they said, no, you have to talk to the council. I said, okay, well, can I have a council meeting? We went over the file and we sat down and then we finally were able to put this in last.
And then it looks like on January sixth of this year, Ms. Nash asked our town if they would reduce the liens. Not sure why she would ask that, but that's what the file shows. And, and you had asked earlier, what was the procedure? Did you ever try to refinance your house or anything before that so that these liens would come up?
Yes, that's what, she said, you won't be able to refi.
No, but had you tried before?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So the goal is to buy. And so she said, this, until this gets done. And I said, okay. And so we obviously went that. And she said, well, if you want me to write a check, just write me refi for three hundred and whatever my principal is, plus the lien. And I go, Melissa, why would I, I don't understand. Is that, is that meaning that this is over and I can't work through this with the town or, and she's like, well, you know, Dan, because we're friends, why don't we, you know, I have another person in my office that's going to work this and then I'll, and you contacted the, the, the Mr. Clark of everybody I'm talking to. And I sent an email, copying everybody in, saying, hey, guys, can I start to understand? Do I go, because I actually showed up to a code board meeting. So before I requested this, I came into the code. And I said, no, you have to go to the council. This is not, you can't revisit an old. So I, so I then started working through the council while we're here to, to understand, to get through, to unfortunately hash all this out, to do everything we're doing.
During the other code violations that you had between two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twenty, did, did Dana ever say to you, hey, Dan, do you remember we have this outstanding dirt issue?
No, I, my, you know, the conversation that we had leaving this meeting last time and the ongoing is, I've not, I haven't been visible. I've been pulling permits and roofs and all kinds of stuff, just bettering the, we bought this property. When we bought this property, we put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this property. It was, it was the, the lady, husband just died and it was, and I've got pictures of what this property looked like. We have brought that property back to almost new condition. I would like to say new, but it's not. So it's not without reason. We're not, this house is just not sitting there aging and looking bad. It's fence, put, Dan, I recommend putting fence done. Hey, we need new pavement on my street. New pavement goes in. Hey, Danny, new sod, new sod goes in. Hey, Dan, you need to put numbers, not just on your mailbox, not just on the fence that's facing the street, but physically on the house. That went on for a long time. I did. So I don't know why the town, after seeing them so often, so many times, no one said, you know that there's this, this big fine that, you know, no one ever mentioned it.
Well, ironically, we used to do that to people. We had a guy named Mr. Barbie. And we decided to be very proactive with Mr. Barbie and we worked and helped him out with all his issues. So that he did not have to have a hundred and eighty thousand dollar lien. Do you know of Mr. Barbie? Have you heard of him? No. He, um, we had, we dealt with him at almost every code board meeting when I used to be on the code board and then here as council members. And that kind of concerns me because it seems like maybe we just focused too much on one individual and, and wasn't looking proactively at other persons. And my concern is, I know you raised your children here and you've been through tough times. I know you've been a resident here for a long time. Um, and I just, as a council member, have a problem. First of all, life is too short. You know, when we started this meeting, we did start with a prayer, like you said, and we were asked to look for wisdom. And I think wisdom is more than just cross-examining and asking nasty questions of you. I think wisdom is trying to look at who you are as a person, trying to understand what your true intent was. And, you know, so what I'm seeing from you is I, I see a person who was trying. At least you, you, you fixed seventeen code violations. I'm not holding against you had seventeen. And you're trying to do stuff with your house. I, and that's just how I see you. And I apologize to you to go through what you went through tonight.
Thank you. Those code violations, let me just bring, because it seems like a lot. If we left the trash out on Tuesday, she would call all day. So trash gets picked up Monday. If the trash people came and they left it out and I came home late or something like that, there'd be a call. You know, Dan, this is Dana, what's her name just called me. She also called about three other houses around you. Can you move the trash? Yes, I'll move it right now. Dan, you know, your car was there this morning. So I work, we have a private man's, everything happens at night. Everything happens at night. So I'm out all night. So I'll pull up, leave the, leave the car, go in the house, come wake up in the morning, leave. She didn't like that. I get it. No problem. I agree with you. You know, shouldn't I? But that was the, again, the origin story to a lot of those is I remember one time the construction debris, right? We had a permit. We, they, they left the trailer too long, right? They left it like for more than a week or something like that. She called all day, every day. Now, does anyone want to see a trailer? That's a construction trailer because you're demoing and stuff like, nobody does. I, I don't. It's happening right now in my house. But I get it. I know why she did it. You know, can't, I'm not saying she's wrong or right, but seventeen violations were very minor, like, you know, move the car back off the street, which is my private street, by the way. But yeah, I get it.
But it's seventeen over twenty years. You've been
Twenty-two years.
Yeah.
Twenty-two years, yeah.
Your vegetation was out too soon.
Well, seventeen, I think the note it was just the
Twenty-one. They were
No, it says
Carrot. They were like, it wasn't like seventeen.
Right. So since, according to our thing, it says, since two thousand and eleven, you had seventeen code violations, which included loose dirt. Obviously, trailer and disrepair, open storage, fence and disrepair, you know, you have vegetation without too soon. No address on your residence, which obviously caused a big, big to-do here. Expired tag, overgrown vegetation.
Yeah. So she also didn't like that if we on Sunday pulled the trap, and this was the landscapers, they would pull, you know, the palm trees and put them on for the she wanted it done on Tuesday. I get it. I totally get, I'm not saying, but that's, again, did it go to code? Did, did I stand in front of code and, you know, plead my case? I was, no, we immediately had that picked up. We had the vegetation brought back on the property and I pulled it back out next day, once Dana called, you know?
Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah. I'm just trying to make sure that seventeen was not, you know, I didn't sit in front of the code seventeen times to the board.
Is, uh, yeah. Does anybody want to make a motion?
That's okay.
Basically, if anybody wants the lien reduced, is anybody wants a lien reduced?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we split it down the middle.
Just for clarification before there's a
So I came up with a hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-two.
Did you add in the address number lien and the?
Well, I didn't see that. I
He's only requested consideration on two liens.
What were those two?
And based upon his letter, just want you to know that this was a reference.
Okay, so the main one is a hundred and seventy-five, seven.
I just want you to look at this real quick and look at the bottom numbers and see what they are. Each page represents a different lien.
Then we got, then we got a hundred and seventy-five, seven, seven thousand, three thirty-two, sixty-nine and three hundred.
So those two were business licenses. We've always had a business outside of the town. That's, that's a conversation that I don't think is worthy of the council. I think I just need to pay it and, and go from there. But
Okay, so then
But the mailbox was, you know, we came into compliance. We, we then had three, three. We had our mailbox, which is right in front of the house. Then at some, a long time, we had on the entire property. There was numbers on the fence. What was requested is that there were numbers behind the fence on the building, on the house. That went between Dana and I for a long time. And, you know, they cited that that was the case and that was the case. So what I
Are you asking for all four to be reduced or just the two?
Reduction, but I felt that when I first came in here, you know, this was, I, I didn't know if there was a protocol to how this was done.
Whatever you want to do.
Um, we have numbers on our
Putting it down the middle is a reduction. Correct?
You're just talking about the, the one seventy-five, seven, or the one seventy-five, seven and the seven?
If that's what it is.
Can we?
I thought it was all four. Well, that's a motion that's on the floor for the council.
For all four?
For, you would like a reduction on all four?
Sure.
So that's all half.
I thought there was more protocol.
That's all half of everything.
Okay.
And that's half. We're meeting in the middle. In the middle is where we meet. That's, you know.
I'm gonna just, so for the, one of the motion.
Do I need to amend the motion?
Uh, just restate it. I want to give you a number so that you can have that and there's no there's no confusion. That's all right. I have a total of a hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents, when split by two. Is ninety-one thousand, six, six, six point three four.
Okay, well, the motion is that we split the total of the liens in the middle.
All right. There's a second? Well, the council is now second in the motion that we need to vote on it. We, well, we can discuss it, obviously.
Now it's been second, so there's discussion.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't know if I had a part of it.
No, well, we, we talked, so.
Yeah. All right. Any discussion on the motion? We'll start with Councilman Rodriguez.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to vote for it. And not at any disrespect for you. I just think it's not a fair number for you. So I, I think the number should be lower than half. I mean, I, I can't believe we're really actually thinking of finding a town resident. Ninety thousand dollars for loose dirt. And so that's how I just
But we held another one vow to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm. For what?
For liens.
For what?
That were on bad decision-making. I don't know for what.
It was not loose dirt, my friend. And it was not loose dirt. That had question marks all over the pictures that are in our town file. About whether this is loose dirt.
Okay.
And it's not. And I'm just sorry, I'm, I don't believe that's a wise motion. I don't believe it takes into consideration who is in front of us right now and the fact that our town has lost nothing from this, other than our administrative fees. I'm not trying to go light on you, Mr. Whitaker. I've had arguments with you in the past. You know that.
I've had arguments with you in the past. You know that. Had arguments with everybody up here in the past. This has nothing to do with you personally or any of you. I just don't feel it's fair. So I would not vote for that. And I always do think that perhaps, you know, maybe this issue should come back some other day. And maybe we can be fairer.
You don't have any recommendations, uh, where?
My recommendation would be probably like ten thousand dollars because Mr. Clark, I think you said thirty hundred in administrative costs.
I, I don't remember the exact number, but it's not significant. Ten, ten thousand would cover it.
Okay.
All right, Councilman Pavone, any discussion on the motion?
I, I agree with Val. It's a little ridiculous for, for where it sits. I was, I'm good with ten thousand. You've already spent ten, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have received, um, we did come out of pocket quite a bit hearing this on. Not that has to be here, but I, I agree with you, Mr. Pavone as well. I mean, you know, it's all our, it's all our responsibility to keep properties, personally. And we have a nice house now. We've done everything that, um, I think, you know, what you understood and told and did. But I do understand that this has taken a huge, huge, big toll and, and I do, um, want to comment.
Vice Mayor Shalhoub, any comments on the motion?
I was just looking for a compromise. Good call, question.
All right.
If it gets defeated, gets defeated.
All in favor of the pending?
What, hold on, this is.
Go ahead, Mr. Freebo.
You're looking for a compromise?
Oh, I, I was looking for a compromise.
From Mr. Whitaker or?
And I was looking for a compromise from all of us.
Okay, that's all right. So we haven't voted yet.
My issue was just to set the record straight.
I understand.
Okay, because, you know, the, that was my big concern. The record needs to be, uh, needs to be set straight. And there was one thing that I did miss and this is what it just gets me. And, uh, that there was, uh, Officer Rogers hand-delivered the order to Mr. Whitaker on June twenty-ninth, two thousand and eleven. So that's an issue to me.
Yeah, no, let's put on our backs. We took a picture and put on the fence.
So, yeah, it, it is, it wasn't hand-delivered, Bob.
You didn't do it to me.
It was, there's a picture of it in the file if you want to look. See, that's the problem. There are so many like little details we look at, but then I go to the file and it's like, I mean, the example, I, it, our record is not clear that he ever came and asked about this lien before talking to Melissa Nash. Someone put it in there that it is clear. But then I looked at the email and look, we're all lawyers, there's three lawyers up here. Can you imagine if you cross-examined her on this? Oh, I'm not sure the date because it was in person. That's what her first sentence is. So how can I then say that, Dan, you must have come in before you talked to Melissa Nash and inquired about your lien? When I have an email from one of our employees here who says, I'm not sure about the date, then she goes on to try to clarify, but the part I'm reading is, I'm not sure about the date.
I, I also asked, uh, asked, uh, the town to clarify hand-delivered and it was basically, it just means they delivered it. It wasn't that it was placed in your hands. It was meaning an officer.
Yeah.
Went up and any of the posted it or they hand-delivered it. There's no, there's no telling.
Well, on that.
Which it was.
On that particular, what Mr. Um, what the vice mayor is saying, it actually shows a picture of it on the, on the fence.
Yeah.
You did not come into my property, knock on the door, say, hey, here's the.
But you did receive that one. That one wasn't taken?
No, I just remember what was in the file.
But I mean, it was, you did receive that or it was taken or you don't recall?
No, no, I never received anything according to this.
Okay.
You just saw the picture in the file when you went through it?
Picture the file because I was going back and trying to recreate how we missed it. So I actually read, like Mr. Dan and I, we sat down, he pulled up the file. And I was looking, I'm like, what was the protocol? Why, how do we miss this? What, these were all questions I was trying to figure out. And then I spoke to Dana and Dana's like, um, you know, we put it on the fence and, and that's good. We put on the fence. Um, we've done our job, quote unquote. And I'm like, uh,
So we're still, we're still in discussion.
Yeah.
But, Mr., is it?
We're still in compromise. We haven't voted yet.
Oh.
Okay, so we're, what, what's our number, ninety-one thousand?
The motion is ninety-one thousand, six hundred and six, six dollars and thirty-four cents. It's a pending motion.
All right, and where do you stand on, where do you stand on a compromise for that? I don't know, and, and I'll tell you why.
This is so out of order.
It, is it? There's this discussion. Charlie, are we out of order?
It, it's your meeting and you have to make the decision and until you're comfortable, your discussion is appropriate.
Okay, well, I'll tell you why I'm, I'm feeling the way I feel. Because there's, you're Mr. Whitaker at Carandis Road. And then there's twenty, maybe thirty other properties in here. And there's a resident that's here right now that has concerns about some of that stuff and her concern is it never is addressed. And it stays the same. Is it valid or invalid? And then we're up here to, we've been put in this position to try to decide for the community overall, what's going to maintain the overall residential, commercial or the residential atmosphere for our community. We have a new member of our community here who probably could have some concerns about what could happen on her street. So that's why I had said to you before, we're put in a difficult position. Well, because what happens is, is then we said, in my opinion, gentlemen, we set a precedence. And we've done that. And we've had others that we've looked back into the file and they've been held to liens of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We've had other people that came in, whether they were aware of it or not, have paid fifty-seven thousand, forty-seven thousand. And, and I feel for you, trust me. I, I'm, I work, I work hard, just like you do. I work very hard for everything I've earned in my life. And, and I respect that. And I don't begrudge these guys that, but that's what we're faced with up here when we do this and you try to maintain. So.
I just don't know how we should profit off of it. That's always been my concern with liens is just, why, what, 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 what right do we have to profit off of a, 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 a mistake? Yes, I get it. It's a violation and that's why we have our codes and rules and that's, we do have other residents, but sometimes there's just such a gross.
I understand. But a mistake, mistake in my eyes is the, the numbers on the, the street. I, I consider that loose dirt on the side of your house where it would have been nice if you laid two rows of sod. Because I consider a flower bed and that can considerably differ. There was grass laid for, on, on front of Carandis Road, but not, and I understand it's a private road, but guess what? Private roads are uh, your responsibility. So we have residents who are coming in here now wanting the lake dredged, wanting something done about their weeds. Um, that could help with that. I mean, there's a, a lot of ways to look at this. I'm not judging you, saying you didn't know, you didn't know or any of that. I'm just trying to look at what we set as precedence, council members, even if I'm not here in five years or two years or three years or whatever. The police department works hard, she works hard, Mr. Clark works hard, Mr. Scheck works hard. We give our time and energy up here. So it's, in my opinion, it's a matter of precedence and we have held those others. And if, and I noticed this because I've done the same as you did. I bought a house that needed, and I put three hundred thousand dollars into the house. And when other people had come here and they were noticed for a violation or whatever, their first inclination is they will look at the guy down the street. Did you guys ever get on him or do anything to him? Which is what if I were somebody who had to pay a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in liens? And I caught wind of it, even if I made a bad decision and they reduced it from a hundred and ninety-one thousand down to ten. You, you could see the dilemma there, right?
Well, I.
Yes, you could. You could.
Well, I, I, I don't know if I'm, I'm interpreting it the way you, I, I.
I understand, but I'm just telling you what we have in terms of the timeline and what was there. So that's.
In terms of presidents, I think you have somebody who, who came in young.
And they did, but they did the same thing too, but they still had to pay. And the other person, he did the same thing too, but still had to pay.
Yeah.
So.
But do you think a president should be set for president's sake? I do not.
I think overall, not just for sake, just for overall, how do we handle this here today and in the future?
Well, you, you got a good question too, Paul, because we really don't know how we've reduced other ones. You making some examples, but we're comparing apples to oranges. I remember we reduced that house that became the Airbnb because these people wanted to buy it from New Jer, New Jersey and they said, could you reduce this fifty thousand dollar lien to five thousand dollars?
And that's where we started learning the error of our ways.
Well, we did that for complete strangers and we reduced it and then they came in and they turned it into an.
Well, no, they, basically they lied to us. That's, they weren't complete strangers. They lied.
And.
They came in and had the money to fix something that had been let go for ten years or better.
And, and that's why I compare that. I think of those people who came from out of town to do it. And then I look at Dan as a resident who I've assume you've put a lot into our town.
Yeah.
What you've done.
I think that's a present. I think you could actually go.
I, I understand.
You know, someone who came in young, bought a house dumb, worked hard, rebuilt that, became a part of the community, worked through the issues.
I agree. I understand.
Either way, ten thousand, ninety thousand is tremendous amount of.
I, I understand.
So, so if you're saying we're going to set a presence.
It's still the reduction.
Yeah, but I, I feel, my opinion.
Okay.
My opinion, and I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm not saying anyone's wrong.
Absolutely.
Is, is that there should be compensation for the town. Is it, is it brought? It's, it's, it's a very minor, 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 in my opinion, again, situation. And is it equal to ten thousand dollars? I don't think so, even on a present, but I do think it's fair though to say, listen, this has been some effort, even including Melissa's time. You know, I think her and I've got fifty hours, maybe even more. So from a present standpoint, precedent, um, you've had someone come in through the years, has up until two weeks ago, I just put a thirty thousand dollar roof on, thirty thousand. It just, that, that, that permit just got done. Prior to that, we did something else. Prior to, there's tremendous amounts of permit fees, effort. So if we could just say, let's compensate the amount of hours, no, no fault, no, there's no skin has been lost. So nobody's been, um, it's just, let's compensate the town, let's compensate, I guess, I don't know how that works. Um, and say, the president is, Dan did pay ten thousand dollars for something that's very minor, loose dirt. He did work for it. He has invested in the community. He has brought up a house. He has brought up a third gen. That's my present.
Okay, so that's ten thousand on a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and seven hundred versus, okay, so then you got to seven thousand dollars that was in there too. You see what I'm getting at here?
Sorry.
Well, there's another, there's four liens. There's another one in there for seven thousand. So when you're talking ten, that's, you know what I'm saying? That's even on seven.
Yeah.
And, and we're going to, we're going to be confronted with this for time to come here, so.
I, I think that, that, that being confronted is the. I've already had people ask me, is this even actually kind of what Val's mentioned is, oh my God, is this even a conversation? Like, you know, are you in compliance? How's that? So I get all that. Has there been all this in between? Yes. Once this is done and, and I pay you guys ten thousand dollars for, for, you're going to see ten thousand dollars all over this neighborhood. The same ten thousand I'm about to invest in, in loose dirt, you're going to walk out and see it across the street, on your own park, on your own property. You're going to see ten thousand dollars everywhere. I'm the one who actually hasn't paid it. No one else.
I don't know.
That's what I mean. That's what I mean. It's like, if you want to associate a price tag to it.
Right.
That, when you wake up in the morning, look at your neighbor to your right, look at your left, look at this park, look at the park across from the street. That's got nothing but.
When I look at my neighbor to my left and right, they don't have loose dirt.
I've checked all the.
But I think, I think in my opinion, if he has a ten thousand dollar fine by this weekend, everybody's going to be mulching their beds and checking their numbers on their house. I mean, that's.
Including me.
Yeah.
So I, I think that, um, with balance of the ten thousand, what I'd like to pay what the labor is, you know, thirty-five, forty-five. Um, I, this is beyond, I, I can't even walk out thinking that what's happening is worth ten thousand, but I get it. I get it. We're here. We have to work through this. We have to come up with a number.
We don't even have that right now.
Yeah. I don't, I, if you ask me to respond, that's my thoughts.
I, yeah.
Not disrespectful.
No, I've let you talk. I, you know, I've let you talk.
I would like to, if we could come up with a number, what the town is investing in. Ideally, that's what I'd like to come.
Well, then we would, we couldn't vote on that tonight then because that, that would require more investigating, correct, Mr. Clark?
Can we?
That's a number.
Can we make a motion that says, once you find out what the number is, we agree to it?
I, I, I think my number's probably too low for the rest of these council members, except for maybe Mr. Pavone. I don't know. I just know it's more than what Dan told me that we had invested in time in it. I don't think we have to pay Ms. Nash anything.
And she, I think she only gets paid when, when the lien gets paid. If she's collecting the lien. I don't know.
I don't know how that works. And I think you're required to pay that. I don't think it just changes the lien. I think the requirement of, of the agreement is you must pay that.
Well, I don't know if I'm, a non-council can make a motion. Can I make the motion that I compensate the town plus Melissa Nash?
No.
For the.
No.
But I just want to comment on the motion before we vote on it or before maybe there's this motion to table the motion. I don't know what's going to happen here. I would like to get some finality to this, at least what we're doing today, whether that's postponing it or whether we're, we're going to rule on the pending motion. I, I want, I want action. I would like, I think we can all agree that we can make some type of a decision today. Ms. Whitaker, nothing personal, right? You, you came in here, you have, you had a position you had to defend. I was asking you to defend it. The main problem for me is the same problem I had when you came here last month. I understand someone might have plucked the stuff off your fence, but I don't understand what happened when you were mailed the notices. And I know when you got the, the, the property address, you know, notices were posted. You didn't go to the hearings. More notices were delivered by hand. You didn't go to the hearings. They imposed the lien. You get mailed that. Next thing you know, you're in compliance. And Dana found you in compliance during her patrol versus being notified of the compliance. At least that's what documents we've been presented.
So can I actually add that? Because there's more to that story.
I, I, I'm certain there is and I, and, and you, you can if you need to, but I just want you to hear where I'm coming from for a moment. As easy as it is to say, well, this was just a mistake and oversight. I think there's a quick, easy argument to go, you did all you thought you needed to do. And you're like, well, you know what? I'm not doing it anymore. This is ridiculous. It's loose dirt. So to heck with it. And we'll just see what happens. We're going to, we're going to find out what happens. You know what? I'm, I'm done going to meetings. And I'm not, you're never going to tell me that was your position and I would not expect you to. But I'm saying. I know it's speculative and I want you to tell me, and I want you to appreciate that there's just another side to the story that can be derived from the other side of, hey, this is just a simple mistake. Because on both of our ends, you don't know how to answer the questions related to the notices. And we're sitting here going, okay, well, we have to take you for the benefit of the doubt, not the mailed notices. I mean.
They never came. So.
Again, we got all, we got to take you for the benefit of the doubt, right?
Benefit of the doubt is, did I show up? Did I talk to the, did I, did I invest in the property? Did I put sod down? Did I invest in the irrigation? Did I put the fence when she requested? When we're going through, um, the, uh, the mailbox, you know, she, there's, we actually notified before she came out. And then she said, oh, I didn't get it. That was another conversation. So there's, there's this, this, when you say, hey, you know, you didn't do it because, if that were the case, I wouldn't have put the sod. I wouldn't have put the irrigation. I wouldn't ask her to come out and walk the property on the outside of the street. So that, the, the way that's formulated has to be careful because I, I could in turn say a lot, which I would never do. I'm just telling you straight facts. We did come to the meetings. We did put sod. We did put irrigation. We did put fences. We did do all these things.
And here's the flip side of, or the other part that we're talking. Here's part B. I said this at our last meeting. We got a fiduciary duty to our town. And we have a fiduciary duty to our town.
Fiduciary has a lot of conditions.
I, I'm, I am very familiar.
Okay, so I'm asking fiduciary to be fair, not to be black and white.
I think that's a, an issue that the council has to, to weigh when we're sitting here trying to reduce the lien that from what we can understand is perfectly fine. From a legal perspective.
I do appreciate the time.
I appreciate you being here. I really do. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you, right? The questions I asked you, I wasn't attacking you. I just want to know what, what happened here? At the end of the day, you say, hey, I didn't get it. Okay, you didn't get it.
I know, but I think when you watch that, the meeting live on, you're going to go, oh.
I'm going to go, hey, I got excited. Hey, man, like I said, you came with the position to defend.
Before we vote, Charlie, can I have some clarification? So if we decide to table the motion that's in front of the council at the moment to give Mr. Clark an opportunity to come up with a real number, even if it's twelve grand, does Mr. Whitaker have to appear again next meeting or can that be done through notice? See what I'm saying? So, okay, we don't want to, we don't want to stick with the ninety-one.
Are, are you, are you?
We want to table it or whatever. I, I made the motion, correct?
And if you table it, then it's got to come back to you.
And if you table it, then it's gotta come back to you for a decision.
With the number that Mr. Clark can provide with us, because I'm taking this serious, Mr. Whitaker. I understand ninety-one thousand is a lot of money. I'm not taking it lightly.
But Mr. Clark already told us.
Well, I don't know. I, that's off the top of his head.
Well, you said it was much less. I thought at the last meeting, you told us it was around thirty-six hundred or somewhere in that range.
I'd like to go back and redo the numbers. There's been a lot of time invested in the last six weeks on this issue, and I'd like to make sure that that's all incorporated in the number.
Can't, can't, we don't have the table motion. Can't he just withdraw it? Or do we gotta vote on it?
You can, you can withdraw a motion.
I'm saying you don't, if you, depending on what you wanna do.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking for clarification. Well, I'm, like I said, I'm trying to be fair with Mr. Whitaker. I'm trying to see this from every angle. I've gotta be honest with you. I would have handled it much differently. I I would have handled it totally differently. But we're all, we're all different. Well, I would have confronted or spoke with my neighbor, and I probably would have said, if, could you come to me first and help me understand what I'm doing that's so upsetting? And then if she said no, that's a different situation. If you know that she's doing it, because everything I saw in the file, constant complaint, constant complaint, constant complaint.
We tried.
Those are here.
Yeah, yeah, we tried. She almost ran over our dog on purpose.
She do what?
She almost ran over our dog on purpose. Hit it.
You know, I I understand.
Maybe get some background. So besides me.
I.
I I would like for.
Well, when you say, you know, he asked if.
All right, let's have a, hold on, we, we have a call to the question. We need to vote on the motion or table it.
I'm gonna withdraw my motion.
Okay, there you go. Any other motions on this matter the council would like to make?
I'm gonna make a motion that we table this and allow Mr. Clark to get a real valid number where we're at that we can all live with and and we can move forward.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We got two votes.
Aye.
Three, motion carries.
Yep.
You understand, you wanna explain to him, Paul?
Sure. A sent, from what I understood from the motion is, come back next month. Hopefully, by then, there will be a much shorter discussion on the issues for the council to consider. You very well might not even have to come up and talk again. You might. Who knows? I I gotta see what the agenda's gonna look like and what the plan is from the town. But I do encourage you to be here next meeting, which is the second Tuesday of the month at six-thirty, and see what happens at that point. But right now, your lien is still the same. It has not been reduced. The pending motion to reduce it was withdrawn. There's no other motions to reduce your liens. It's just a matter of, the motion was asking the town to bring back some information for us to consider on what we might be able to reduce the lien to.
Thank you.
That date is December fourteenth.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
President Pro Tem Freibold said the real number, and I'm assuming that that means the actual cost incurred by the town.
And and thereabouts, because you have to, I I'm sure there's a formula to, for Dana's time for, even though Melissa gets paid for that number that she collects. So maybe we can meet and talk about to verify that. I I'm not sure. I mean, this is new.
We'll, we'll put the cost in there, whether they're Melissa's or otherwise. We'll include the attorney's costs.
Yes.
Uh, staff's cost. We'll, we'll, we'll put that in a spreadsheet and bring it forward.
Yes.
All right. All right, audience comments? Anyone from the audience wanna make a comment? Yeah, we're on a new topic. It's whatever you wanna bring up here. Ms. Warren.
Anne Warren, seven five, Totor, Edgewater Circle. Are residents allowed to come within a foot of your property line with a solid structure?
We actually discussed this last meeting. I thought the town was gonna look into that with with Dana.
And Mrs. Warren was in the office today talking to to Mary. I did not find out the results of that, so did she not answer your question?
Well, I felt that I wanted to come here and present it to the council. I wasn't totally satisfied with the conversation. It's no reflection on Mary at all. I just felt that I would like to have the council address the the situation. My next door neighbor has built a storage shed, very substantial. It's a real structure. And it is, it comes to within, I would say, twelve inches, sixteen inches of the property line and is killing a hedge of mine where it's cutting it off from the front and off. And the structure is like so, and so.
Have you told Dana? Has it been reported so she can go at least inspect it?
I don't know if I've told Dana or not.
Assistant Chief Sal, can you see if Dana can look into that? Dan, can we, can we have that happen?
Sure.
Uh, I'm sorry. I did send Manny out there, because I talked to Ms. Warren, and I did send Mandy out there. He was unable to see the structure from the, from his vantage point, and he wanted to see if he could. That he can't, okay, that's what he, that's what he was wanting to do, is to find out if he can meet with you to go into your yard, because that's the only way he's gonna be able to do it.
If I came to the town hall this morning with a complaint and a question about what I considered to be a structure in violation and damaging my head, you really think he had to come to ask if he could come on my?
It's it's just a matter of of protocol, ma'am. He can't just enter your property and without your permission or or even allowing him to go back there. Well, now he knows he can knock on your door, ma'am, or he will know.
He's a wonderful doorbell, even if the doorbell doesn't ring, so I hear it. My dog tells me when anybody sits foot on my property.
So I I think we should start at that, you know, let Dana do what she needs to do and investigate it, and then she can proceed to rock around.
It wasn't Dana, it was Manny.
Or Manny, sorry.
I I don't know what can be done after the structure is completed. And my, my question, the same as I had this morning when I came over here, was why wasn't I notified of a variance of an ordinance that was going to impact on my property?
What are you, what are you referring to?
I had no notification.
Oh, you're talking about this structure? If there was a variance.
If there was a variance, she would have been notified.
Right, so it's most likely that he did not go through the process.
Maybe there wasn't anything granted, so then that was a violation.
What we need to find out from Manny is, was it built in compliance with our setback requirements, or was it not? If it was built in compliance, it should have been permitted, and it would be allowed to remain. If it's not in compliance, we can require it to be removed.
And I have the property by a concrete mark.
I understand, but we need Manny to go out and tell us whether or not it complies or not, then we can address the issue and make that decision.
And what would be noncompliance? What distance from the property line?
Sheds are allowed to be three feet from the property line.
Well, that's why Manny needs to go and look.
All right. Anything else, Ms. Warren?
Thank you.
Thank you.
He's gonna follow Mary and Mary tomorrow, so we'll make sure to make sure.
Thank you very much. Any written questions or virtual attendees, Dan?
We, we have one, two, three, four, five virtual attendees, and Tim Dottry has his hand up.
All right. Is he gonna be able to speak, or is he typing in it?
No, he'll, he'll speak.
Good evening, Tim.
Says the attendee is self-muted. Tim? You're self-muted. Now his hands down, now his hands back up.
Bye, Chief Adams. Sorry for the delay.
Why, why he's unmuting himself? There was a written question earlier today.
All right.
I responded to it already, but I'd like to read the question and and tell you my responses.
Please do.
Uh, this came from Mr. Cook, and it says, looking at Dan's report, I have a question about where the town is going to come up with matching funds for item one, the six hundred thousand dollar Pine Tree Bridge. And my response is that match is coming from the loan we took out in twenty nineteen to be repaid by the infrastructure sales tax proceeds. Uh, that, that actually, we, we have nine hundred thousand dollars of that loan set aside for the bridge. The second question is, where's the three hundred and fifty thousand for the removal of vegetation from the lake? The match for the three hundred and fifty thousand will be coming from the sale of the sixty-nine hundred Westlake property and any lien revenues we get this year. This match and the state grant will give us seven hundred thousand dollars for the lake cleanup. That's all we can commit to at this time. He went on to say, in addition, does the town council have estimates for the town's portion of the septic to sewer, the Blue Way Trail, and the lake cleanup? And my response is, the Blue Way Trail will be other people's money, Palm Beach County, the state, federal funds. That's always been our plan, is to leverage other people's money. Moving on to septic to sewer, we have no estimates for the septic to sewer yet. We hope to have an engineer's opinion of cost by the end of March. We can do the estimate at that time. And I put a side note in here. By the way, the governor just announced that all DEP funding, just announced all the DEP funding projects. He awarded just under five hundred million dollars. We asked for one point seven million. Not one dollar was awarded by the governor to Palm Beach County, Broward County, or Miami-Dade County. He gave away his five hundred million dollars to others. So we probably will not get anything out of the one point seven million DEP request we made. And the last question was on the lake cleanup, and my response to that is, as I read earlier, that's all we can commit to at this time.
All right. Is Mr. Dotry unmuted himself?
Still says self-muted. So I'm not sure what's going on there.
All right. Any other audience comments? If he unmutes himself before we end the meeting, can you let us know?
We can.
Thank you very much. Moving on to status reports, we'll start with you, Assistant Chief Sal.
Mr. here?
Yep.
It's Mr. Dotry.
Okay. While he's dealing with that, any questions regarding Sal's report? Which I appreciate. Councilman Rodriguez?
No, thank you.
Councilman Pavone?
No.
President Pro Tem Freibold?
Nope.
Vice Mayor Shaw Hub?
Thank you very much.
I will, we'll tell you that.
That's not on.
It's on now.
Yeah.
Reference to CSX Railway. The delineators have come off again, so we've had three cars in the past. Now it's about thirteen, fourteen days to go down the track. Okay. I've out them after I physically mounted new ones that I found in the canal.
Wow.
Their maintenance will be out this weekend again.
I still can't believe people turn down the railroad tracks thing and they're getting on it.
It's a GPS issue. It tells them to turn, turn now, and people just look at the little screen and turn. It is an amazing thing, but I don't get it either. That'll be in next month's report, but I wanna let you know, and.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Uh, Sal, is, is there anything you can do about some traffic control issues in the morning on Pine Tree and Forest Hill? Can you get somebody out there to, you know?
We, we can go against the traffic light. We get the call because certain people, and it's the same people all the time that call, don't wanna wait for the light. They feel it's too long of a light. It's, the light is the time. Some people don't make the turn right away. Some people wanna make the left-hand turns. That is our most accident-prone intersection, because people try to run it, or they don't stop in time. If we put an officer there, then all he is is just gonna work against the light, which is counterproductive, and that would never happen anywhere else in the city, just for that intersection.
Well, some neighbors called me and said, you know, you gotta do something, you know, when Officer Fisher was here, he seemed to be front and center.
Yeah, they, they reach back away sometimes when there was.
Been gone now for what, three years? At least.
Four. Yeah.
Well, that's a positive impression they made on our residents.
No, it is good, and we try to work with them. We will go out there and and monitor it at times, but if we park a car there and then we get out, it actually confuses some people. Because they're working with the light. You can't just go against the green to let residents out of Pine Tree. Leave early, or whip around and go out Westlake, or go out Keller, and, you know, use one of those other avenues.
All right.
I think so.
No problem.
Charlie?
My report is included in your agenda packet. It's fairly straightforward. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Charlie?
No.
I I have one quick one, Charlie. If if we pass, if we reduce the lien at our next meeting, is there an option to reduce it so it's payable immediately versus it just gets reduced? How does that work?
You can reduce it with a condition that the reduction applies if it's paid within X period of time or by a set date.
We've done that before, right?
Yes, if you add that condition to the reduction, it would apply. And if it's not paid by that date, then the reduction is null and void.
Okay, thank you.
I presume Bill is not, is Bill here to do any type of update?
Bill's online, if you have questions for him.
Anybody have any questions for Bill Lynch from Jones Edmonds?
No. No.
No. Moving on to Mr. Clark. Any questions for Mr. Clark or additions? Dan, you wanna make?
I I have a couple of announcements. The first one, I don't know if you've seen your email, but as I said earlier, that list did come out from the governor, and it looks like we were shut out. All of Palm Beach County, Broward County, and Dade County were shut out. So I I suspect one of our asks, the one point seven million from DEP, will not get funded. Where that leaves our other three asks, we won't know till July. Second thing is, the chief is not here because he has COVID, as does Anita, as does Eliza. And Officer Walker was out, but should be coming back to work. Friday?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Is he doing all right? Is it, are they all doing all right?
Anita should have been released from the hospital today. Wes is at home recovering and getting stronger, and Eliza should be back to work on Friday.
Wow.
We're hoping the chief will be back to work on Monday, and we're hoping Anita will be back to work on Monday. That's kind of what we're looking at.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Dan?
No. No questions.
None, all right.
Uh, I do have the two questions from Mr. Dotry.
Oh, all right. I thought he was gonna be, I thought you, I was hoping I'll resolve the mute issue.
He he said he couldn't figure out how to unmute, so he asked me two questions. One, Greg mentioned that the phone numbers, all the phone numbers are available for. One, Greg mentioned that the phone numbers, all the phone numbers are available for the council members because of some security issues with our IT folks and extra caution, I guess, on our part. The phone numbers and the email addresses are removed from the website. There's a general one there for the town and anything that comes through, we forward to you. So they are not readily available on the website. The second question was, what is the Infrastructure Oversight Committee meeting that's occurring next week? And the Infrastructure Oversight Committee is the committee that was put together because Palm Beach County's ordinance requires that we have oversight of our expenditures on the once-in-sales tax. So the meeting, meeting that will occur next week is, we will tell them what we did with money and they will say, is that consistent with the budget and what council wanted to do? And we'll tell them yes, and they'll say great and sign off on that. Usually those meetings last about thirty minutes. Because we have double booked next Thursday night, the zoning board meeting will be going on in the chambers and the Infrastructure Oversight Committee meeting will be going on in the Police Department EOC.
All right. Thank you. Any other written questions in since we've been sitting here? Good to go?
That's it.
All right, move on to council comments. Start with Councilman Pavone.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. See you in December. That's it.
See the tree lighting. And the menorah lighting.
Menorah lighting on.
Yeah. Yep, and the vote parade. We got a lot going on. Councilman Rodriguez?
The same, have a good Thanksgiving. The fourth, we have the parade and the tree lighting and there's also a tennis tournament that morning.
And the twenty-eighth is, wait, the town tennis tournament is?
Yeah, it's going to be really small scale, but it's that morning. It's the first Saturday of December.
The fourth is parade, too?
Did I miss?
Is that a problem?
Well, for parking, it's going to be a problem. It'd be really good if they could park over there.
Yeah, maybe we'll have them do that because moving it to the eleventh is too hard, I think.
I didn't see that in our upcoming events.
Because it was just scheduled, I think.
This is the one we did in twenty-nineteen and you did in twenty-eighteen.
Yeah, the limit to eighteen people.
Okay, nice. What's the date of that?
It was going to be that Saturday at eight, eight fifteen in the morning.
Oh, December fourth?
Yeah.
Okay.
We usually have people showing up around eight-thirty, nine o'clock because they decorate here.
So you want all the parking to be on that side?
So, well, if, if they all parked over at the doctor's office, that would be best.
Okay.
And walk through the gate.
Okay.
All right, fantastic. President Pro Tem Frebold?
I'm good. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Enjoy, be thankful. Tell the people you love that you love them.
I agree. Vice Mayor Shawhoub?
The, the information that we received from the governor suggests that exactly what Dan said, the, I think it was approximately five-hundred-million dollars went to others. And it's very obvious that none came to Palm Beach County, Dade County and Broward County. But I do want everybody to know that the septic-to-sewer conversion pursuant to the wastewater grant had approximately two-hundred-and-seventy-five-million dollars given to municipalities throughout the state for septic-to-sewer conversion. I want everybody to appreciate that. Also, the Springs Grant Program for twenty-one, twenty-two at approximately twenty-eight-million dollars to septic-to-sewer conversion throughout the state. So that's where we're hoping to see if we can get some assistance for that, which is inevitable in the septic-to-sewer conversion. I just thought I'd give everybody an update on that.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I offer one more thing that the vice mayor just reminded me about?
Sure.
Palm Beach County has a pot of money coming from ARPA for septic-to-sewer. They did two things this last board of county commission meeting. They passed a sixty-four-million-dollar capital improvement program that includes cleaning the silt trap on the C-51 Canal. If you remember many, many, many years ago, they did that. It's critical to the Lake Worth Lagoon Initiative and keeping the lagoon or improving the lagoon. But it also has a significant impact on us because when that silt trap is full, they have to limit the velocity of the discharge of the structure, which means they can't pull the lake down to get rid of the water at potentially times we need them to. So cleaning that silt trap is really important. We had a conversation this morning, Bill Lynch and I and one of his colleagues had a conversation with Jeremy from Palm Beach County, who's going to oversee that project. And we talked to them about two things. But Vice Mayor, are you prepared for this? We talked about partnering with our biomass removal process while they're doing the cleaning of the sediment trap. Like fifteen years, twenty years ago. We also talked to them about what monies they had set aside for septic-to-sewer to see if we could play on them to throw some of that money our direction as well. So we have that open dialogue going. There's very good relationships there. We're doing a lot of planting thoughts and seeds for the county to maybe take action on.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
We'll have to remember to thank the mayor when he's here on December fourth as our grand marshal.
I agree.
And that's Mayor Dave Kerner for the county. Just for clarification. Thank you very much, Dan. Appreciate it.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Be safe. Thank you for, to all those who attended the meeting. Look forward to seeing y'all at the upcoming events, the twenty-eighth, the fourth and the next town council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, may I? Dan, receive, are we registered for January to Palm Beach County Day?
I'm not sure that I got everybody back that was going to go. So I have to check with Caroline and see who's responded. Last time I talked to her, only two people had responded.
Well, I don't necess, I'm, I responded, number one. Number two, I don't want to be in another, you know, satellite accommodation.
Understand.
Thank you very much.
And my email password's messed up again, so I'll.
So you're going?
Yeah.
Me too.
I think I already applied. I think it was the first reply. I'm going.
I think you were.
I'll let you know. Let me check.
And Bob, you can stay with me in my room.
That's a bet. I look forward to it.
I, I was able to get the, the suite.
Are you already booked?
I booked it the minute I got the email from Palm Beach County.
All right, I'm in.
So we're going back to the Duval.
Yeah.
And then February fifth, I think, is the ball?
Is the ball.
The ball.
The mayor's ball.
The mayor's ball.
I'll put it at this here.
So we have that saved the date. As more information comes out, we'll get that out. But are we going to make a presence there again as well?
I, yeah.
I think we need to.
Okay.
Hey, we're asking for some money. They need to see our face.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. I'll take a motion.
Take it.
All in favor?
Thank you, everybody.
Hello, we've still got a code.
Your CRA meeting.
Yeah, we're not done.
CRA.
Come on.
Sorry.
Not that I'm going anywhere in the area and stuff.
All right. We'll call into order the November ninth, twenty-twenty-one Community Redevelopment Agency meeting for Lake Clark Shores. Roll call, please, Mary.
Chairman Paul Shawhoub.
Present.
Vice Chairman Robert Shawhoub.
Here.
Commissioner Gregory Frebold.
Here.
Commissioner Valtean Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Albert Pavone.
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Take it.
I'll take a motion to approve consent agenda. Wait, hold on, wait. All in favor of the agenda motion?
Yeah.
All right. Take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So much.
Take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any presentations? No new business? Any audience comments, written questions, verbal questions?
No, sir.
All right, commissioner comments?
Not this time.
All right. Take a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
I got a second.
All right.
Thank you.